I've done it a few times.
You are? Terry's up there?
She just read my message.
We didn't have anything set.
As I said, they're gonna do it one day.
Get all your graduations done too.
And it's steep.
Yeah, we didn't get to the point where you wanted to because.
So it started tearing off this roll too, but the whole thing. It's fairly the process.
Even most of the.
It's a lot of blessing.
One mountain time, not.
You actually gonna say anything? Oh, they're graduating. Yeah. Oh, she's just the Omaha.
Yeah, and it goes quick. Once it, once it starts tearing off.
So she's not, she's a.
It pulls down.
All right, I have got five thirty. We'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carried. Five school board basics. Number one, put students first. Number two, follow the law in your own policy. Number three, respect the chain of command. Number four, base decisions on shared objective information. And number five, operate in the public eye. Next item are the consent agenda items. Uh, Kindred did, did pass out, uh, one more sheet.
We didn't get credit card, um, statements until today, so that's what the majority of it is. And then NCC also is our second semester for our college classes and alternative high school.
Any questions, comments on the consent agenda items? If not, I would entertain a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carried. Moving on down to visitors, public forum. We do have, uh, two people that would like to speak. Um, you'll have three minutes, Heath and Wendy DeYoung. Subject is thanks and gratitude. The floor is yours.
First, I'm just gonna say, from the day that we started, we had first opened and enrolled our kids and we were met with welcoming, welcoming arms, and we appreciated that. And we knew that we made the right choice to bring our kids here to Sibley. And we have had many teachers that invested in our kids and probably more than what they realized. They walked with our kids through some really hard journeys. And we are very appreciative of that and the and blessed by that. Um, a few of the teachers in elementary school were Mrs. Williamson, Mrs. Randerveen, um, Mrs. Stramberg. They each took time with our kids and helped them through a lot of things. Um, Marty and Laurel, they were godsons in our lives. Um, Corey Dennis. We would, Jaylen would be like, I was in the principal's office today. We're like, oh, great. And we're like, why? Oh, 'cause he had candy. Um, Dawson got in trouble, so we just never knew when the principal would call, if it was gonna be good or bad. Um, but it was always good because it held our kids accountable for many things. Um, things were good and some things weren't so good. Um, they, you, they always encouraged our kids. Um, we had administrators that helped us work through um, opportunities that were given to our kids. And they couldn't be here in school, so, and they were allowed to miss those classes and make up the work and they really appreciated that so they could follow their dreams and their aspirations. Um, our, our kids always knew to, um, I think it was Hunter, like, well, all of our kids like to push boundaries, but with one particular student or teacher, he had made a comment and she said, really Hunter? And he's like, yeah, really. And she goes, do you want me to call your dad? I do have his phone number. And he looked at her and went, no, thank you. So I just wanna say thank you.
Yeah, and that's our, that's our whole reason for being here. Like, so yesterday at commencement, I mean, our, our time as a general has officially come to an end. And so, like Wendy said, when we made the decision twenty some odd years ago when our oldest was ready to enter kindergarten, um, it was a whole set of different set of circumstances, but it was one to where the, the school district we're in wasn't able to handle his educational needs. And so it was like, well, either we just send him to that school, he gets on a bus and comes here anyway, or we just cut out the middleman and send our kids here. And so that's what we did. And we've, we've been thankful and grateful for that every day. And so, yeah, so for twenty some odd years of our life, we've been a part of the general's family. And I guess the thing that I wanna share, yesterday Stan touched on it yesterday in, in his address that he gave to the kids, was about le- leadership, but also their, their, kind of their impact or their influence. And what I had been thinking about, which Stan I know will appreciate this, 'cause I know he's a Marvel guy, but um, there's a quote out of the, out of the one movie, um, of Spider-Man called With Great Power Comes Great Responsibility. And I guess that's how I would say thank you to you for, and the school and the teachers and administrators. Um, you guys have great power over our kids in, in the education. I mean, you spend literally almost as much time, if not more, with them five days a week as what we do when they're at home. But also with that comes great responsibility. And we appreciate the responsibility and in that of the, the engage, the empower, and the educate. But also in that piece of that, I also, as a father and as a husband, I also greatly appreciate that it doesn't say enable. School district has been very good, and we have. We, my wife's not lying. We've, we've been in the principal's office in, I think, all three levels of the school. Mostly for good, but there have been a few times we've been in there for some disciplinary issues, but that's, that's okay. I've never claimed my kids to be perfect. Um, they're not saints. But in that, that's also, I respect the fact that these kids aren't being enabled. And it's a tough world out there today. And my kids are, they're all in that age where they're starting to become adults and go through that. And so I appreciate the fact. And so in that engaging and empowering and educating, we have had tremendous opportunities come about. And so I just, I wanna share just a few of those with you very briefly of where those opportunities have come. Um, most of these are places. Uh, we have wound up in York, Pennsylvania. Uh, we've been in Des Moines, Iowa, too many times to count. We've been in Fargo, North Dakota, Las Vegas, Nevada, Buenos Aires, Argentina, Spokane, Washington, uh, Wichita Falls, Abilene, and, um, San Antonio, Texas, Rochester, Minnesota, Akron, Ohio, Cedar Falls, Iowa. Um, we have been represented this school in anything from a state welding competition to, uh, all-state speech, to the state wrestling tournament, and anything and everything in between. Three of my four kids have had the tremendous opportunity to not only represent the school, they've had the opportunity to represent this state, and they've also had the opportunity to represent this country. And let me tell you, it is, it is a very, it is a very, um, humbling, but also pleasing moment as a parent when you're standing there and you're watching one of your children represent your school, your state, and your country, um, all at the same time. It's just a, it's just an amazing feeling. And that comes from the opportunities that you guys here have given to our kids. And so, we're, yeah, Wendy named a lot of the teachers. Just very, very grateful, and also grateful for the lessons that, I mean, through the education system, our kids have taught us and how we had to learn not to be afraid to let our kids fail, just like you guys aren't afraid to let the kids fail, because the whole point is to try and make them productive members of society. And so we, we thank you, um, for that. So, um, uh, yeah, the, the last thing I guess that I, I would say in closing, um, I just have, um, and I'm not here to like preach a sermon at anybody, li- literally, I do mean that, but um, there's three verses from scripture that I would just like to leave that to me are a fitting way for me to say thank you to you for all that you've done for our family and for our kids. Um, and here's these words. It says, may the Lord bless you and keep you, may the Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face towards you and give you his peace. So, th- thank you and thank you for letting us have the time. So, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to administrative reports, uh, principals, um, Mr. DeZale?
Yeah, so just some general, uh, school information as you can read there. We're kinda in the process of wrapping up, uh, the school year. We have a lot of events going on. Last week, we went out to Des Moines and, uh, with the fifth and sixth grade to the Capitol Field Trip. Um, we've got Field Day coming up here in a couple weeks. We've got grades going here, there, and everywhere. Um, and so those are excellent and exciting opportunities for those kids. Um, we're also in the process of looking through our end-of-the-year assessments and um, taking that data and using that data to make the best decisions possible for our kids and for our schools. Um, the PD, as we've stated before, has been, um, shifted from the direct, um, specified time to more of the flex time. Um, and then the staff attendance is in there. I also included a couple of, uh, attachments. Uh, the first one is the inter- interventionist. Um, this is from Barb Boelmsen. Um, just some data to show kind of the impact. Barb was out for the first uh, sixty days of school, maybe. Uh, got a late start, she had some surgery, and so this data is uh, retroactive to when she kind of started, but, um, she saw three kindergarten students all year this year, and all of them um, scored growth above expected for the grade level as she was working with them. Um, the first graders, she had, the one that she saw all year long made above-average growth. The two that she's had for the last fifty days did show some growth, not quite where we saw growth of the other kids, but she hasn't worked with them as long. And then the last student in first grade showed, uh, great growth, even though she's only been working with them for seven days. And then in second grade, we sho- saw growth in, in multiple areas. Um, and all five of the students that she worked with, um, from second grade showed growth at or above the expected growth for that grade level. And we also, um, you know, the, the boards made a commitment to, um, train some of our early literacy instruction, uh, instructional teachers and in the FLY program, the foundational literacy instruction. And so we're appreciative of that. And so Barb was able to graduate three students out of that program. Um, it's a very, um, structured and intensive program, and so that was a big celebration, um, for that's, uh, for that, for this year, for Barb there. And then the second, uh, attachment that I have on there is just kind of a, uh, like I said, we're looking at our assessments, and so here's kind of a comparison. We'll see our proficiency percentages, uh, what percent of our kids reached the proficient, um, um, hurdle or the prof- proficient bar as we're looking through, and then kind of comparing them, um, to the Northwest AEA and also the state level as we kind of go through there. So, um, just some information for you, um, in terms of our FAST, our literacy, and also then down at the bottom of that document, the, the ISAS results. So, very proud of, of the work that our teachers continue to put in. There's growth to be made, but, uh, this is, this is good stuff. And so, like I said, very proud of our staff for continuing to do what's best for our kids.
All right, any comments, questions? Thank you. Uh, moving on to secondary, Mr. DeZale?
Um, like I said, a lot of the time recently has been making end-of-the-year plans, specifically last week or so into graduation. And so when I wrote this, it was ahead of time, but I said by the time we read this, we had fifty-seven that graduated and crossed the stage yesterday. Next year, we could be at fifty or so, maybe a little above that. Right or so, that's what we'd anticipate maybe right now, potentially. Um, a lot of time for the end-of-the-year plans, wrapping things up, different, um, trips and things coming up. I know Biology's going on the, their bio tour to the Lakes Lab and, and there's been some math tours and things like that at the high school level and the middle school, and some things that they did today. So, a lot of those types of yeah, events and things are coming up here. Um, PD, they've been spending a lot of time to do their spring. I didn't put any data on here, but their spring end-of-the-year assessments for FAST um, with interventions and so forth like that. And the PD, a lot of the time this month will be spending on wrapping up their individual teacher professional development plans. And that's really all I have right now.
All right, any comments, questions? All right, moving on to Mr. Craig.
Summer, excuse me, the summer lunch program, uh, information is posted on Facebook and was emailed. Parents will continue to put the registration form out for that. Um, but it is gonna be a grab-and-go system this summer like it was during COVID. Um, it'll just be easier for everybody involved. We do encourage people to sign up so that they can have somewhat of an accurate count of, of how much food to make each day. Um, open positions, um, we do have some updates to that. We are looking for, uh, a high school math teacher yet. And, uh, now we're looking for a kindergarten teacher and a sp- elementary special education teacher. Um, so we are, uh, we do have a couple of positions that we're advertising right now. Um, and still in search of some coaches and support staff. Um, also a reminder for folks that the last day of school is May twenty-sixth, that it's two-hour early dismissal. And the teachers are done May thirty.
All right, any comments, questions for Mr. Craig? All right, moving to board committees, policy, finance, and facilities?
Uh, Finance Committee met for negotiations. Um, the other two committees did not meet.
All right, moving on to item D, recognition of excellence.
And, uh, all track, uh, on this update. Um, lots of great things since our last meeting. Madison Brower um, finished third place in the eight-hundred-meter run and second place in the fifteen-hundred-meter run at, uh, the Drake Relays and finished both of those races in school record times, one of them breaking her own school record. Uh, Zoe Ackerman, Bria Wassman, Olivia Hench, Madison Brower, um, they were conference champions in the distance medley in conference record time. And Ben Byers was a conference champion in the sixteen-hundred-meter run and set a school record at the Okoboji Meet. Madison Marco was a conference champion in fifteen-hundred-meter run and three-thousand-meter run. And Elena Wingate, conference champion in the one-hundred-meter hurdles and four-hundred meter, meter hurdles. Um, so we had several state track meet qualifiers that'll run later this week. Madison Marco in the fifteen-hundred and thirty-three-thousand-meter run. Madison Brower, the eight-hundred-meter run and the fifteen-hundred-meter run. I'm gonna guess this is a typo. Um, Elena Wingate, um, in the four-hundred-meter hurdles instead of the four thousand. Um, Madison Brower, Elena Wingate, Olivia Hench, Zoe Ackerman in the distance medley, Madison Brower, Elena Wingate, Bria Wassman, and Zoe Ackerman in the four-by-four, Ben Byers in the fifteen-hundred-meter run, David Poppin, Cale Rider, Dawson Krakis, and Ben Byers, the four-by-eight-hundred-meter relay, and Alejandra Bernall in the thirty-two-hundred-meter run. So we wish all of our participants good luck at the state track meet this week.
All right, moving on to discussion items, school board appreciation month.
And as it is tradition, uh, each May, we celebrate school board recognition. And, uh, we have a certificate here from the School Board Association.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
We appreciate all of the time and the efforts that you put in to not only come into these meetings, but being the liaisons between the district patrons and the district. So, uh, thank you for all that you do, uh, in your dedicated service.
All right, moving on to item B, July IASB training.
And this, this one's for Stan, so I'll let you go ahead.
Sorry, good man. Um, so I sent that out earlier. Did you guys have any thoughts on that? Preferences? I heard back from a few people.
Yep. I remember we gone the last week, I think, July.
I don't remember what I told you.
I kind of thought, based on what we have, when we get the discussion later, we'll look at whenever we move the July board meeting to, to see if we can't double it up that same night. You know, when we can have that discussion. When that agenda item comes.
Tenth, eleventh, twelfth, or the week before.
What about the topic? The one that I probably heard most back, it was either, either's fine or this, but there's one that's, the one, um, workshop topic is new superintendent and board leader sta- board leadership, excuse me, establishing a strong foundation? I didn't hear anyone say no to that. What are you guys' thoughts on that?
Nope, I think that sounds good.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so Kinder and I can reach out later this week to IASB, see if they're available on the night. Whenever we set the board meeting for July, at least start with that date, regardless. Wonder if that works. Okay, we'll try that one.
Yep.
Anything else with training?
That'd be it.
All right, moving on to item C, Sulan Conference update.
So the, uh, the big news in the Sulan Conference right now is the consideration of a move to cashless ticketing through Bound. And so, uh, we've all experienced that now with state events and the postseason events that you have to buy your tickets ahead of time and, and there's the convenience fee and all that kind of stuff. So, um, there are three different ways that Bound can work with groups to, uh, go the cashless ticket route. The, the one that we are looking at is called Let's Go Bound, and what it basically does is for participation and certain fees, you get all of their, um, the entire Bound suite of products and the app use of it for free. So if you don't go this route, you have to pay for different pieces of the, of the suite. So the package, um, includes uh, a place to store athlete registration for physical and concussion forms, camp registrations, um, an activity scheduler mo- scheduler module, which is, um, like the calendar we use with our school right now. Um, facility rental, uh, so somebody can keep track of that in the office through the app, transportation, uh, the scheduling and, and, um, and, and how to put those things together. So all of the modules that allow you to maintain your activity and athletic, um, uh, programs for all of the logistical things can be done through this program. Bound also hires an information director for you to, to be the overseer of all of it. So you still manage a lot of it in-house, but there's somebody there that oversees the whole thing and can take care of whatever you're looking for. Um, so Bound also provides the card readers for us to use at the admission gates. So there's a reader that people tap or swipe their card on. We have to have the phone or the iPad or whatever device to connect it to. Um, but they will provide the card readers, which are normally an expense. So by going with the package, and the, the athletic directors have, have presented this, um, they can go with the cashless ticketing, get access to all of this stuff, and they don't have to pay the extra fees that you would have to pay, uh, to be a part of this. Now, Okoboji and, and MLC Floyd Valley have approved moving forward with this package. Um, the other eight districts are considering having discussions about it. Um, there isn't anyone else that's committed, but the general feeling is that whatever the consensus of the conference is, is what they will go along with. So they haven't made a decision. And, and we're not going to reach a decision tonight necessarily, but there may be things that we can support and can't support that I can take back to the superintendents for more discussion. The other piece of this is ticket prices. So as we all know, when you go with the cashless ticketing, there's a ticket fee that goes along with each ticket purchased. That's ninety cents. And so in order to accommodate that, we would consider raising prices to seven dollars a ticket. Now, you may remember from last year, the conference voted to increase rates to six dollars a ticket for everybody so that we could increase revenue and recover from, um, the pandemic and, and all of our activity budgets. They're not in great shape. And we said at that time, that's gonna be it. We're not gonna look at it again for several years. Six dollars for everybody will get us a long way. So the only reason that we're considering this is because if we go cashless, there's gonna be ninety cents that we're gonna have to eat out of every ticket if we go that way. And so, um, this would be, any agreement that we do with Bound, uh, will be for at least three years. So what we s- what we agree to and set up as a conference will be in place for three years. We are asking them for a five-year agreement to consider so that we don't have to revisit ticket prices again. Uh, because we still feel the six dollars is doing, is doing okay, but we have to cover the ninety cents in the ticket. So again, um, we did consider eight dollars as a conference because some, some districts are not in great shape with their activity budgets yet. And, uh, even one district suggested to just go to ten because that's what everything else is. Um, I'm, there, there was not anybody in favor of going that far. But the superintendents did talk today and discussed going back to seven dollars as our recommendation. Um, I'll think of that in a piece. So, um, with activity passes, you can also do activity passes through Bound. You're not required to, but you can. Um, no district so far has considered what they're going to do with their activity tickets because obviously if the price of a regular ticket goes up, naturally the activity ticket would go up as well. Um, Bound can create those for a one-time setup fee, and that's either two dollars a ticket or two-point-nine percent depending on total sales. The free passes that we typically do for seniors, uh, for board members, for administrators, for people that work events, those kind of things. Bound can also set that up. If you enter all the names in the spreadsheet, they, they create the passes. And those are still free. They're not, they don't attach a fee to those. Um, there was one more piece to that. Um, I'll think of it. So in a nutshell, that's what the conference is considering by all joining together and going with Let's Go Bound. Now, two other pieces of the, uh, two other pieces that are available. The first one is the fundraising module. This is another portion that you have to set up if you decide to go with the Let's Go Bound package, however. Um, it's a little different. So the Bound fundraising module, basically in the app, would have something you could click on to make a donation to Sibley O'Chee Athletics. Bound gets ten percent of all those donations. So somebody donates a hundred dollars, they get ten. We already have the Booster Club that is trying to do fundraising. We alwa- we already have all of our activities that do individual fundraisers, and there's always a lot of confusion with, with fundraising. And so this is not something that we would want to promote, but it has to be included in the package. So if Grandma from Georgia happens to see it and, and Little Billy's and a sophomore in track and they wanna contribute, they could. But it's, it's something that has to be on there, but not something that we have to necessarily promote. The last one is optional. Uh, and that's the sponsorship module. Again, this puts, this would put us in conflict with the Booster Club who just came to us with the, with the advertising idea of the football field, what we do here in the gym. Um, so for thirty-five hundred dollars per district, you can open up advertising. They will let you advertise on whatever and, uh, on the Bound app. Um, so then you could sell advertisements, so somebody could put their ad. Soon as you open up the Bound app, here comes an ad for one of your local sponsors, instead of seeing something from wherever. Um, and we all, we all see those all over the place. Um, you can s- the district sets its own advertising rates, but you have to spend thirty-five hundred dollars just to open that up. So if, you know, the best you're gonna do is break even. Um, if you don't really push it and expect a lot out of your, out of your sponsors. So I would not recommend that because there's, there's already a lot of stuff going on. So I would not recommend that, because there's, there's already a lot of stuff going on. Okay, that is the entire package of information. What, what questions does this bring up for you? Remember we, um, we have the, what's involved in the package, and what Bound provides, and we have the ticket prices. Those are the two big questions.
Do any of those other things on their registration modules and stuff, do they, would that be a benefit that we to Amy or to whoever?
You've talked with her, did you get a?
Um, I think the athlete registration, the physicals and concussions is a way to house that instead of putting it in a folder and then we have to look it up from season, that, that could be a benefit. Um it varies by school, some have used the camp registration, some ha- don't. Um
And you'd use that for your local?
Your, your local camps, like we wanna set up the SO volleyball camp, you could do it through that. And then as a way to collect money too, now they take a percent, it doesn't cost us anything, but then they take a percentage of that when you set it up.
Not in that ninety cents a ticket then?
No. There are features that are a part of that. Um, the modular, the s- the scheduler, definitely so, they would use. The last two, I don't know that we'd get use out of or not, it would depend how that look, cause it would replace things we can do already.
Yep, and the scheduler would just be instead of using our school, you'd use this instead. Have I know I think Gritten Jotero, Bruce Van Airshow used it last year, cause I got contracts through Bound from them. But I don't know, has anybody else used it besides in the area, have you heard or not?
MLC did, I don't know what extent though, did they put all their stuff on them?
I don't, yeah, that I don't know either.
They said they used it, right, I just don't know to what extent.
Most of the conversation has been around ticketing, and the boys have used Hometown something.
Yes.
Hometown ticketing?
Hometown ticketing. The girls use Bound. There's movement to have the state unified and using Bound.
What? No!
I know.
Shock.
That didn't come from anybody down in Des Moines or Ames, did it?
I, you know, I don't, I, you know, I don't, I don't know where it started. Um, but, but as the conversations progress, there's also all these other features, so if you open the Bound app, you can see scores from the games, you can see stats, all of the things get up through Bound. And so not only is there movement to get Bound as the ticket place, it's also where they're wa- they're wanting to bring it all in, so that you do all of your athletic things through Bound. Wha- like these, like the stats and the scorekeeping and, and, and everything. So
Yeah, it was, I know my wife looked at it last year.
Uh huh.
For scores and stats and stuff.
I looked at it for starting lineups when I had to do, uh when I was doing stuff.
Were you gonna talk about, is that what you forget that even if we use this, people could still pay in cash? Cause that was the point.
Oh no, but that's, but that's, that's true, so you could still um so you can still maintain a cash option for people at the door. Um, they do not have to do their ticket through Bound, but if they buy it ahead of, they still have to pay seven dollars at the door. They don't get a different rate because they didn't buy their ticket ahead of time. You still get your seven dollars that way.
And when they used uh like the game in Okaboji in here, whatever, that they went fine for the ticketing process.
Well, and we ran the one at Okaboji, right?
Yep, that's what I mean, yep.
Um, I think as, as long as the technology, that was the concern last year, is the technology wasn't keeping up with, does everybody have broadband to support it and, and could the, could the, where all the information was going, could it handle all that traffic at the same time? So that, this year I think went pretty easy, and it works great down at State, you know, when we go, there's no issues. Um so yeah, anything could happen. But it's worked very well this year.
So there could be some conference schools that use this, and there could be that, some that don't?
No, we, we all go or we, or none of us go. The conference, the conference will take a vote. Um, once all of the boards have discussed. Um, so only two of the boards have actually met and made a decision.
Were you at the end when they asked that question? What if we have seven or eight that say yes and two or three that say no?
Well, as, as long as it's a passing vote, which is seven of the ten member schools voting in the affirmative, then
But I didn't know, they brought that up.
Act as a conference.
Right, even the three that said no would, as part of the conference bylaws would
Yeah.
Would accept the agreement.
Okay. So it doesn't have to be unanimous, there just has, there have to be seven.
But you could, if somebody just walked in, you still could pay six or seven bucks and get in.
Yes. That would be the option of the school to maintain that or not.
So does Bound get money, that money through then, or no?
No.
And would they also have the option to scan debit card? You said a card reader?
No, it would be there, it would be there. So a little scanner if they have the ticket on their thing.
Pre-purchase only, yeah.
Okay.
I, I thought, no, they said today that there would be a card swipe option to pay at the door.
It's to pay at the door or, or to get?
Yeah, that you could pay at the door, like a tap to pay thing.
Oh.
That was my understanding. You wouldn't have to pre-purchase it, but you could still pay electronically.
Hmm, okay.
I kept running that, but that was my understanding.
And I was going through Bound then, or that was?
That was, that'd be, that's still through Bound.
Right, so they, so that would be the same as buying your ticket ahead of time?
I can't speak for Amy, I haven't had the same discussions that Stan has with Amy, but when I, in my role as activities director the last couple of years, if um the message didn't get out that they needed digital tickets for postseason, I set up a iPad or something like that, where they could buy the tickets right there with a debit card, and then scan them through the app. So I, I'm not, again, I'm not sure what Amy's plans are, but it, it is possible to buy them with a debit card.
So then, so then if, if Bound provides the card readers, then, and we have the iPads, then we're setting right ago.
Yeah, yeah. I just entered the card, what I did when I was doing that, I just entered the card information. I just went on the site and just entered the card information like we, like you would if you bought a ticket two days in advance or anything like that.
Hmm, okay.
You know what I mean? I just had a set, a, a spot there for people to go buy them if they didn't have them in advance.
I know what it was. We got a text message um that the Lakes is more than like, the Lakes Conference is more than likely going to seven dollars a ticket for next year, for conference events. That's what, that's what I forgot.
So are you looking for a information survey tonight, or recommend, you're gonna recommend and we vote?
Well, uh no vote, cause we didn't put on it as action, I bet, but any um thoughts, support it, concerns against it, that I can take back to the superintendents when we have another conversation? Um and then we can go from there. So is, is there, what do you want me to take back to the superintendents? Ask questions, concerns or something?
I guess, what are they hoping to achieve by doing this? I mean, just simplicity of getting people in, or, I mean, to me ninety cents seems like a lot, if you're gonna raise tickets to seven bucks, why not keep that yourself, I guess, but.
Or, I think the intention is that we're going this direction as a state, and so this is just the beginning of the process. To get us all going that way. It would eliminate having to have a lot of cash on hand during and after, and taking care of it after the game. Making sure it gets in a safe and deposited the next day. I don't know that we've had any trouble with that, but maybe there are some districts that have. Keeping track of ones is a pain, but it's what we do to if you're gonna set the ticket price at six dollars, you're gonna count it. So but yeah, we're, we're headed this direction as a state, and I think that's the, we're getting the initial pitches of how, how we should do that, and Bound is already a, an established company in the market and involved with parts of it enough already, that if you add the other things and the tick, and the cashless ticketing, then you're, then you're just making the simple, a simple transition.
Did anybody hear of any complaints with state tournament and where you had to do it there anyway? Any complaints with people that, I mean, I think our patrons in today's world are certainly capable and willing to do it.
Part of the biggest one is yeah, if the school has good wifi or internet service, you know, if people didn't have it pulled up ahead of time like at Okaboji, there's a few that struggled to pull up their com- their tickets on their phone. That's probably the biggest complaint I heard.
Hmm. I think at first there's probably gonna be hiccups and confusion because people aren't
At least in?
They're gonna miss the message that they were supposed to purchase ahead, and there'll be a little bit of grumbling, I'm sure, but
I think so.
But if it's gonna come eventually, it's gonna be there to help them get used to.
And there are people that we've already helped that aren't computer friendly that, you know, to buy the tickets ahead of time and if they're, if they're still coming, you know, if we're still talking about our local events, they can still buy an activity ticket, so they're buying one ticket instead of one every night.
When are they going to approve this?
They're lo- so the, um, we're still waiting for the agreement from Bound to come to the conference. Um, and it's gonna go to Okaboji, their lawyers are gonna look it over and send it back to us um as a conference to make sure that it's, says what it says, what it's supposed to say. Um, so there are some boards that aren't gonna get to it until June, um but they're looking to get it done as soon as possible, because there is a training, June eighth down in Des Moines, that um people that will be using the system locally could go to to learn how to use, use the system, so um, I think there's some folks that are already gonna send people down that way, but it needs to, it needs to get done um sometime in, sometime in June, so that people can address what they're gonna do with their activity tickets and get that promoted.
Yeah, that was the reason for my question is, we're gonna have to reassess activity passes, so when will we know so that we can get that done in a timely manner?
I think you can, if we're gonna settle on seven dollars is the, is what we're looking for for the regular ticket price, then you can, you can start to talk about what that means and, and have a proposal ready.
They finished at the end of the meeting today, they were hoping to have it at the beginning of June, so everyone could address it at their June board meeting, that was the goal. So then, then we would know by July when you start sending kind of information to families for registration. That was the goal at the end anyway.
Alright.
Anything else?
Get enough information?
Okay.
Uh, moving on to new business, consider approval of registration fees.
So normally we would be approving um um, activity tickets as part of this. Um, but there was no request for any increases or changes to instructional fees or band fees. Choir has been removed, because uh show choir was on there, we don't do show choir, and uh the choir uniform cleaning, or robe cleaning fee, they didn't wear the robes and they aren't planning to again next year, so they eliminated that. So it would just be instructional fees, band uniform cleaning and band instrument rental. Um, and we'll address activity tickets later. So I'd recommend approving those registration fees as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the registration fees for twenty-three, twenty-four as submitted, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all oppose, motion carried. Item B, consider approval of bread bid.
So no bids were received, um so we'll need to purchase uh through Martin Brothers with our EEA purchasing agreement. Um, and it is our option, so recommend approving Martin Brothers through EEA purchasing for bread products for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year.
Last year we had?
Last year we had um
Shaughnessy.
Shaughnessy, he is not doing it anymore.
Yep. What's that?
He is not doing it anymore.
I move to approve the bread bid.
Second.
From Martin Brothers.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bread bid as recommended for twenty-three, twenty-four, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all oppose, same, motion carried. Item C, consider approval of milk bid.
Um Prairie Farms had the best bid for milk products, and I recommend approving them for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year.
I move to approve the milk bid from Prairie Farms for twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the milk bid from Prairie Farms, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all oppose, motion carried. Item D, consider approval of equipment breakdown insurance renewal.
And the total renewal only went up eleven hundred dollars, uh which is fantastic, um considering insurance rates. Um, the updated list of inventory as well as HVAC and copier maintenance is included, and enrollment went down, which creates a savings. So I recommend approving the equipment breakdown insurance renewal in the amount of eighty-one thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars.
Move to approve the equipment breakdown insurance renewal.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the equipment insurance breakdown renewal as presented, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all oppose, same, motion carried. Item E, consider approval of replacement shower columns in junior high boys, junior high girls, and the old high school girls locker rooms.
So the facility committee approved moving this to the full board for consideration, and we did receive an estimate from Ben's Plumbing for the shower columns, which come with uh partitions and curtains. Uh Ben's was the only one to submit an estimate, although we did contact other uh places. Um, so if you remember when we replaced the ones in the boys locker room at the high school, they were leaking, they didn't uh you couldn't shut some of them off, same thing going on in the other locker rooms, so we're looking to replace those. Um, and Ben's plumbing estimate is in the amount of ninety-three thousand two hundred fifty dollars, and uh every intention is that they will be able to complete that over the summer, so I recommend approving the estimate.
Do we have any idea, does that, how that compares per unit, if you can compare that, since we only got one bid? From when we did it before? And I know that's tough to do also because of the
Not without looking back at the other.
This is a little higher than we had anticipated though, isn't it?
It is a little higher, about eight thousand.
So again, we have eighty-five thousand in there?
Yeah, so we, it's about eight thousand higher.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the replacement of shower columns in the junior high boys and junior high girls and the old high school girls locker rooms.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the replacement shower columns in junior high boys, junior high girls, old high school girls locker room for Ben's Plumbing. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all oppose, same, motion carried. Item F, consider approval of twenty-three, twenty-four Vista Iowa contract.
This is the accounting and payroll software that the district uses, and the cost is not increasing for next year, so I recommend approving the Vista Iowa contract.
Move to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four Vista Iowa contract.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four Vista Iowa contract, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same, motion carried. Item G, consider approval of new supplemental position, live streaming.
So uh Tony Beavers, our technology director, has spent countless hours over the past several years, nights, weekends and, and uh holidays, vacations, getting our live stream system. Nights, weekends and, and, uh, holidays, vacations, getting our live stream system up where it needs to be. Um, and, and to the point where we can broadcast as many games as we do, the capabilities that we have during basketball with the, with the student involvement. Um, and we're continuing to look to expand other activities, uh, in the near future. Um, problem is, you know, he's, he's working. Twenty hour days trying to get this done, and obviously that's not sustainable, so, um, we're to the point where we need to. Um, uh, we need to try to branch this off to someone, it's not a, it's not a job that, that is not going to be able to be paid. Um, and, uh, for the consideration of doing this for all of the events for the year. Um, uh, we are proposing that we create a position on the salary schedule, um, at fourteen percent. Um, then, uh, there would be two lanes, uh, as there are for the others, experience years one through four. And sixteen percent for five, years five and all. So, um, we would appreciate your support in, um, creating this position so that we can keep it going. Um, and, uh. Help Tony get some well-deserved rest. And be able to spend time with his family and, and all of those things too.
Do you know, do other districts do the same thing?
It depends, so some districts have a position that takes care of this, some districts have, uh, they pay, they pay per game for somebody to go up and. Run the camera or whatever else, um, it just depends on, um. Yeah, I think even just a couple of years ago, we wanted somebody to go up and run the camera for football, for example. And, um, we paid so much per game to do that, while then we tied in the live stream, and then we tied in all the stuff that. Had, Tony tied in all the stuff that had to go with it, and, you know, so it, it, it becomes more of a job to do it. Some of the events can be started remotely, I know he starts and stops some of the events from home, but there's still the camera setup and the, and the programming that has to be done ahead of time. So, some of it is not as, uh, labor intensive as others, but it all requires time. So that's, that's why we'd like to see this, um, this separated out into a position. And it doesn't mean that he won't apply for it, but, um.
Do we get any revenue back from that, this live stream?
No. Yeah, but it's free, so we, we purchase the equipment and we stream it on YouTube like we are the board meeting tonight. Um, so it doesn't cost us anything except the equipment right now to run the live stream. Now, it is used as a, as a benefit for those that do advertise with the district because there are ads that run on there. Um, but, but it is not. There isn't any revenue that comes from that that goes specifically to live streaming.
Cause I think if we wanted to watch Sibley play at West Lion, I, I thought I had to pay to watch that, is that correct?
So if they have NFHS or, what's the other one? Is there another one?
That's the main one.
Most of them are NFHS.
Some of them wanna go free, but they can't. Because when you don't monitor the background, like, and if it plays songs that are copyrighted like at your halftime performances, and you don't have someone monitoring like Tony. You get flagged on YouTube, and then after so many times, you're no longer able to stay on YouTube, so there's several schools that would like to. Stream to YouTube that can, and they have to go NFHS because they've been flagged enough times for copyrighted content. Cause I think Central Lion was one of the free ones that I know that. They also got a professional radio guy, I think.
And we're, we're free also.
Yeah, Sibley was too, yeah.
Yeah, so with NFHS, you pay a fee.
Yeah.
And they provide you with a static camera. That operates based on what it sees. So ours, obviously, we have somebody, it's automated, so the camera will follow, or it's set to a wide shot, so it catches the whole. Playing facility, so. We have a lot more advantages, and the cameras that we purchase are incredibly inexpensive. Um, a, a lot of the cameras we're using right now have been updated in the past couple of years, but they're security cameras, they're ten eighty. Um, P, high def cameras, but they're security cameras, so they're not nearly as. Advanced or have as many features as if you would buy a high definition camera. So for a couple hundred dollars, we get that to work instead of thousands of dollars for what would, what you'd see on television. Uh, and the picture quality's great, um, as long as I'm not running it and Tony has the settings set the right way, we don't have any issue with buffering. Um, you know, it's, it really, really works, works quite well, and very inexpensively.
Yeah, from the ones I've saw, saw over the last couple of years, Sibley O'Chidens is, in my opinion, one of the better ones. So Tony's done a nice job. Any other comments, questions? If not, would there be a motion?
I move to approve the new supplemental position for live streaming.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the new supplemental position, live streaming, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same, motion carried. Item H, um, consider approval of change to June regular board of directors meeting date.
Recommend changing the date to June twelfth at five thirty PM here in the high school library.
Would there be a motion?
I'll make a motion to. Approve the June meeting date, uh, June twelfth.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move the June meeting date to June twelfth, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same, motion carried. Item I, consider approval of change to the July regular board of directors meeting date.
It's recommended to change the July board meeting date to July tenth.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move the July meeting date to July tenth, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same, motion carried. Consider approval of resignations.
We have three, Eve Tangeman and, uh, is a primary educator for Pollan, is a special education teacher, and Carla Beavers is a kindergarten teacher, and it's recommended to approve the resignations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resignations as presented, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same, motion carried. Item K, consider approval of new contracts.
So Renee Hager, this is the ELL position that you created at the last board meeting, recommend approving the new contract.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the new contract as presented, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same.
Aye.
Motion carried. Additional items, uh, the next meetings are listed there. Um, note those as we change both June and July and then August fifteenth. Moving on to item nine, talking points. Anything?
Good to have some open forum, some good comments.
I would agree with that.
I think that was awesome. Wish we had more of those.
Yep.
And I think there are more out there, they just don't come to the meeting, but that was, that was awesome.
We had great growth in the intervention, in the K third, third period, I think it was.
Yep, that's always positive.
A lot of runners going to Des Moines this week?
Mm-hmm. Wish them good luck. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you very much.